Okay, I have a motion we approve the regular session council meetings of April 9th, 2013.
Um.
Any more discussion, anybody, anything? It all, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, May 10th call session meeting, I have a motion they be approved as print?
Um.
Second, got it. Okay, any other discussion on it? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise. Okay, family connection report. Have anybody here?
No, me.
Be you, okay.
Just me and they.
Uh.
I'm the chair of the Child Abuse and Neglect Team. This is what we done in the month of April. We had our first responders meet and greet, which went very well. Our change perception training was at the street center. We had thirty people there for that training, had I think five speakers. We had our walk a mile, which our mayor, we're thankful that he participated in, and the city was one of our biggest donations that we got, and we raised sixteen hundred dollars. We also had our celebrating children's luncheon, which we had there at the Welcome Center. That was all of our, it used to be called our Child Abuse Luncheon, but we just thought that sounded bad, so we changed it to our celebrating children. We probably had about thirty, forty people at that. We had it out of the annexed building. We also had a healthy marriages training. We had a choices class, which we done for the eighth graders, which me and Rachel Hucker taught one, and Amy Lawless in Territorial taught the other. Stroke prevention was, I think, earlier this week at the hospital. Upcoming events, we have a community day, which is gonna be August the 3rd, and we're joining with all, pretty much all the churches in the community. We're gonna have it right in front of the metal building, that's the rec apartment. We're gonna have a huge thing to close. The hospital's gonna be involved, checking blood pressure, we're working on maybe getting some prescription pills, and as it gets closer, we'll let y'all know more about it. Appreciate all that the city does, and thank y'all for y'all service.
Thank you Scott, appreciate that report, appreciate all the good work in the community. Police department report, Jeff Harrison.
For the month of April, the police department had three hundred and seventy three calls for service. Fifty-nine traffic stops resulted in thirty-six traffic situations rearrested, had three intoxicated drivers who were those who were due. Had ten burglaries in April that we're currently still working on. Apparently somebody don't wanna watch TV, take TVs everywhere. BJ's been busy with dog calls, had forty-five dollar calls just in the city for April. Seven bus drunk pedestrians, a hundred and eleven calls just for some days for various things. And I'd like to let y'all know that today, former employee who used to work for the city last month, police department, passed away, Dave Popovich here. I don't know if y'all knew that.
Who, Dave?
Jeff.
We used to get a mileage report individually.
Yeah, I don't know why they didn't put it in there, I don't know why. I found out why they had it on there this time.
Who, who did say thanks?
Paul, the chair.
Paul.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Pat, he retired from here and the mission to council will send some flowers to his family. And gone.
Yes, you have, you said there's forty-five call calls just in the city?
Yes.
You have the total?
Yes, forty-five digits.
Also.
Well, the council.
Take it down, pretty sure more.
I noticed the bed put dogs down, the bill was three hundred and twenty dollars. Find the portion report, the mayor put down, can we get it?
Yes, sir, the base fine was five thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixteen cents, and the city's portion would be five thousand forty dollars and thirty cents.
Sanitation report, grossing, anything here? We do have, the last truck that we purchased is in service now, doing all right?
Yes.
Okay.
Doing good.
What happened to the Ford when he first tried it?
He pushed the button, oh, they sent a man over here, and he pushed the button, that makes it a manual shift, locked it down in low gear. But they, they sent a man right over here, and they took it, drove it, did it in Little Coots and everywhere else. He doesn't want to be with all them bucks, I think, you know? Got a button where you can manual shift it, you know, set it automatic. He, he accidentally hit that one, is that right, Mayor?
That's right, correct.
So he thought something wrong with the transmission.
Well, it worked fine, now the truck worked good.
Good, good. Okay, warrant, sir, report, you got anything there, sir? Uh, are we on? Yes, sir. Let's see, well, I got Don on down there, I'll catch you on down there, let Don do that from down there. And straight, Park, sure, you got anything on streets? Okay. Administrator report, councilman, police guy who?
Yes, Mayor, City of Lakeland, City line mileage report has been submitted to the Department of Transportation, and approval of the mileage report has been received by the city. The City of Lakeland Fisher attended the GMA spray meeting since March 3rd, April 22nd. The City of Lakeland work conversation item had been completed, prepared an agreement of municipal direction presented to the council, the children, the council meeting.
Thank you, sir. All right, tonight, welcome Mr. Bill Wilson, he's the Lakeland Villa Convalescence Center. He's a administrator, and he would like to talk with the council about on the proposal you built. Bill, you tell us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My purpose tonight was to bring you up to speed on where we are with the nursing home project, and I've passed out some handouts that have some details of that project. Those are not final plans, we have a meeting Friday to further massage the plans, actually come up with something that's gonna be the final result, but I wanted you to have what was available now, so you can kinda see at least where we're planning to go and what it's gonna look like. It's gonna be a beautiful attribute to the City of Lakeland. The reason I'm here today is to ask that the city council considered this to be a city-friendly project. As most of you know, the existing Lakeland Villa was built in the nineteen sixties, it was built like a hospital ward, basically, and we have two and three residents in each room, and we share bathrooms. This new facility is gonna be all private rooms, every resident will have their own room, their own bathroom and shower, really going from like eighteen thousand square feet to thirty-eight thousand square feet, so it's gonna be a significant improvement in the way that these folks live. The building now rocks, employs approximately seventy people, we don't anticipate there will be a tremendous increase in employees, we will probably add a few, just by the design of the building, where we're gonna have two nurses stations and so forth, so it will add a few employees. What we're in hopes of is that, since we'll have a state-of-the-art building, that we will attract residents from a larger market area, and we'll stay full. A lot of nursing homes today are suffering from low occupancy, many of them are already eighty percent occupancy rate, and we hope to be a hundred percent and have a waiting list, and really do what we can because of the private rooms, the quality of care we give, and just the state of the art structure that we have. The budget for this project is ten million dollars, and with all the costs associated with this building, we are hoping against ten million dollars. And why we're here today is to ask that the city council would consider waiving some of the permanent cost and inspection cost, so that we can put those dollars through the two, completing the scope of work that we started out to complete, and, you know, provide for our frail elderly folks and give them the best combination we can. So with your consideration, we definitely appreciate that. If anyone has any questions about this project, I'd be very happy to answer them.
On the ten million dollars, is that also sharing the cost of that?
Sorry?
Is that the ten million dollars? I noticed that the payment for the building is that also sharing the cost? So you wanted the ten million that you, you budget?
Ten million?
Yes, so I did. They shared the cost?
Entire, entire project, and it's all been funded by Self-Trade Medical Center. There's, there's nothing locally any contributed to that at all. And actually, profitability of the nursing home, the nursing home generates about thirty thousand dollars a month in profit whenever we're full. Think how long it's gonna take to pay back on standing in the office for that, it's gonna take twenty, thirty years, if you just do the simple math. So, this is not a money-making project, this is really a, it's an extension of Self-Tech Medical Center's presence in this area, and provides long-term care as part of the continuum. That's really not gonna be a money-making project. So any assistance we can give from the city would be appreciated.
How many beds?
Sorry?
How many beds?
Sixty-two beds.
Was probably, yeah.
We, we have sixty-two now, and that's the issue, we keep our nursing homes beds, and we've got a specific need, and no nursing home beds have been given in twenty years. And we have a lot of nursing homes that are suffering from low occupancy.
Everything in there's gonna be brand-new, and based on what you're asking cities to, what are your building permits, and any other permits that we may have?
I understand from discussions that the city has an expense by paying an inspector and so forth, and we certainly aren't asking that you weigh those costs, we're asking that you weigh the cost that we have paid the cities, their portion of it.
Do you know how approximate number that would cost for the inspection fees and the, the fees, the permits, should I start by having a number of that?
Mr. President, I have no idea what the fees would be, that would be something that the city would have to advise.
Diane can answer that question.
For a ten billion dollar project, that's construction. Just the building permit will be figured out. That's not including your electrical, your plumbing, and your mechanical.
We, we tell them it's gonna be wireless transmission, and that could mean, mean the difference between whether we have piped oxygen or suction, or a new computer system, so this is kinda what we got. Our workers, we're at about two hundred dollars a square foot, and just the building of the building.
Our dollar, our inspection fee is split between the inspector and the city fifty-fifty, so let's just say it was fifty thousand dollars, well, they would only pay twenty-five, and that goes to the inspector, and the city would get nothing, that's what they're asking.
That you would not incur any cost to pay the inspector, or something to pay that part, we would hope that you would, 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 uh, ask him.
I'd like to make a motion, I'll get to you there.
Say I have a second.
Second.
Building procedure.
And all the favor say aye? Likewise.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, we look forward to working with you, and we realize there's been seventy jobs that will stay here in Lakeland Hall.
Yes, sir.
And that's good, and also, we all getting old on this, we may end this out there, and I have to be involved, you know, you don't deliver nothing.
We'll, we'll manage preparations for it, and, 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 yeah. Right now, the plan is to, we've done everything we've got to say, the, the cost to keep it maintaining and performing, it's very expensive, plus, we ran solos, which one says, we need that building, and we're gonna figure out what it filled up, and then we got heated crew looking, and we might be the other detective man, so thoughtful on this one.
Sir, I was so happy whenever they could pick up the new nursing home, because we really believe one, I think it's made by David.
Well, good, thank you so much, glad to hear that, sir.
Thank you, Bill, for coming, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Okay, number seven, you want to say number seven?
I'd like to make a motion to kill that project right now, but would you further would you?
Okay, I got it, second.
I second.
Okay, any more discussions? All the favor say aye? Likewise. Likewise, okay. Last week, the council members went over and met with the EBD, the enforcement of Congress, noticed a violation on our, our water pollution control, and Councilman Donald Pat is gonna give us a report on that meeting and all of this.
Really, as you know, there were four of us went over, Councilman Calhoun, Miss Grace, and Miss Currie, I went over, and the mayor, we had an hour and a half, and I think mayor did a superb job in handling the situation with the, these people over there explaining about this way, and mayor, the committee, and then also to be connected with the project engineer, who did an outstanding job presenting a plan to work on the way around and through this problem with the occupation problem. Did I, did I say, did I say not over, sure?
No.
Before I go. Yeah, and it, as, as the meeting went on, and they kept referring to the frequencies and the problem, and some suggestions and how it was about, and we asked a specific question, one being with the response to the deal by four council members being there, with the engineer, project engineer being there, and with the attitude that we had, did we help with that influence and fines, and we come forward from this project? And he said surely that if we adapt those criteria, and I agree with everybody's performance, and me, since that, just tonight, we have received from the new comprehensive correction plan, which I don't know if we had time to read yet, and not, not yet. And I don't think I need to go into that, but since we have a plan in hand, for everybody to review and whatever we need to do there, I'm gonna suggest that we, as, as the plan suggests, we already have, we already started, some of the requirements they've made, and the sand plan and those sort of things, we've already started that, but I'm gonna suggest that we, if the motion is missed, I'll make a motion here.
Yes, quite so.
That we adhere to the, to the engineer comprehensive plan, and begin immediately following that plan.
That's very certain of that.
Certain of that.
Second, any more discussion? All the favor?
I just wanna see if we noticed that, and we know it for the last two weeks, that our reports be coming back good, and the porn is, is figured out, so I think it had a lot to do with the dump in the weeds and the two or three houses we stopped at that point.
Yeah, yeah, that started, stopped on the first April, and our reports are a little over five, and it has to be ten or a hundred, and last week it was a little over five, we're gonna get another report this Thursday, and so.
While I agree that there again, our problem, this, this violation's gonna come on in like a year and three months, according to their paperwork here.
Yes.
And it's been spelled out a lot of problems they, they foresee there, and it's a battle of things, and I think that I respond to this quickly, and ensure, and attempt to work with their program, to ease our times that are overcoming there, we will be fine if they make that very clear, and I think that the amount of time will be determined by the efforts that we're making to raise the following quickly, so that's the way I read it, from what they said in their action force.
Yes. There's a curtain that goes through the middle lock station pond, that was put there in nineteen ninety-two, and it's deteriorated, started falling down, and, and it's not keeping the pond separated, that will have to be replaced, and I believe, they said something, something that costs less than forty thousand dollars just for that curtain. And we've replaced all of the motors, brand-new, and the aeriators, and keep it in work, and so we'll follow this plan, and get this plan, and hopefully our occupation pond will come and apply us. Okay, anybody else got any comments you wanna say? Okay, look at the council's table, anybody got any questions about the council's table?
We did some more on that, and that could, that could stop, you made the one.
Yeah, we made the motion.
It never accepted.
Okay, I'm sorry, you said, Don, second. Okay, all the favor say aye? Aye. Likewise. Okay. I have a motion that Bill, he made here. Second, any more discussion? All the favor say aye? Aye. Okay, we have another bid proposal made on the board, uh, how can you tell us about that?
Yes, sir, and this is for a 2013 expedition that we wanna use for the city administration for traveling, we have Langdale Ford, and I'd like to make a motion that we purchase this. We wanna take, get print code, run us some signs up to go around it, to, 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 to see like a logo, and see where it was.
Yeah, I have a second on that.
Second.
Second, any more discussion?
What was the price, the end price on that?
Twenty-four.
What was it, they gave us a pretty good discount, what was it?
Oh, yeah, that's a forty-something thousand dollar there.
Cut it down to twenty-four.
You liked the truck, that was thirty-one, so we got in there.
I think so, that would've been, uh.
Okay, all the favor say aye? Aye. Likewise, okay. All right, executive session requested by the police committee personnel. Before we go into executive session, I'd like to say I'm glad to see the young people here visiting us tonight, somebody tell us what facet you brought?
This is, this is.
Okay, we appreciate you being here. I say the same thing, y'all may be sitting up here one day, you don't ever know, you know, thirty years from now, you're age, you're not as old as I am, forty years, you're still old, well, you might be forty years older than I am, but anyway, you don't ever know, you might be up here one day, I encourage you to get involved in your government, what's going on in your community, the more you get involved, the better community you will have. We appreciate y'all attending tonight.
Mayor, I wanted to say to my manager, the lead, lead of name, who was here, and who called teaching, committed to teaching at the beginning, they just lead the name to Diane.
Yeah, lead the name, up here with Diane, we're gonna, I have a motion. Excuse me, Gary, I, I'm sure I missed you. Gary, get the fire department report.
Sitting here quiet. Okay, month of April, fire department answered a total of fourteen calls, the city had hired the fourteen, and only three of the five paid, I put the city's paid only six fifty for the month. New vehicle repairs, for the labor station, all the equipment's in, good running condition, and that's been going on, the whole thing I still haven't done yet was put the fence back up, for the park, still gotta get that done. We run the aerator for the fishing tournament for three weeks, we hooked all that up for him, we got that door, saved the pond, I guess, the outcome wasn't too good, I mean, we've done the best we could, but anyhow, that's about it, just for the labor station, everything's quiet, that's the way we do it.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate what y'all do. Next Saturday, next weekend, Senior Citizens Day, fifty and older, the pond will be open, fifty and older to fish all day Saturday and Sunday, and then we're gonna open it up, leave it open for a couple of months, and talking with the wildlife game, the Fish Commission people down there on Saturday, they recommend that we probably roped on that pond, and get rid of all of the wild fish in there, and so that when they come back, put fish in around December, it'll be fresh fish, and we feed them. They take a lot of wild fish in there, where they come from, I don't know, seeing some gar in there, kind of gar's getting there, and big bass, and all, leaving up lots of little fish they put in there. But it's lots, you see some big old bass, and a big old catfish in there, there's some big fish in there, and I'm disappointed in the amount of fish they caught, three years ago, we caught eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred. So I think we need to go back again, clean it out, here at the end of the summer, have a big old fish fry or something, and that, that's the plan, council on that.
Fishing thing this weekend?
It was past Saturday.
No, fifteen.
Yeah, this weekend, fifteen, I don't know, say, may I? How many, how many did you wind up catching? Diane, do you know?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
I think a two-pound cat was there.
Yeah, well, they told me you used.
Two-pound catfish, one pound bass.
But we invested a lot of money to feed there, every week, feeding these and putting up the fence, I thought would stop all the people slipping in there catching all the fish, and it has kept them out, hasn't it, Gary?
Yeah, I just, I, I think the fish are there, they just, it's just, if you don't know how the fish brings lake, you can't catch your fish out there far, but the fish are there, but I think the fish are in that pond, you just, I don't know what's gonna take a kitchen for something, maybe we need to shut it.
Well, they got eighteen hundred, three years ago, eighteen hundred.
Yeah. They love people here.
That thing's deep.
That's what we, we really did each of that year, you know, kept up, really well kept the people out of there, and so we got to change that fence this year, still people fed out of there, so I was really disappointed, but all you fishermen out there know, you have good days, some days they bite, some days you don't.
Right, that's right.
And, and they fish from seven o'clock to nine o'clock, what?
Seven, eight, eight to nine-thirty.
Eight to nine-thirty. So, let's see what the senior citizens do next weekend, let's see what they get out of there all day, see what happens.
We dropped a two-twenty cord, they didn't get some out of there.
All right, I have a motion we go into executive session.
Mayor, I think the mayor may not be able to say, sir.
No, he's coming Saturday night, he was the mayor.
As far as I'm concerned, it was right there, he was, he was coming Saturday.
You got a plan, huh?
He was coming Saturday.
Any questions? All right, thank you, most, you got a second? All the favor? Yep. Then I have a motion, come out to executive session, you go, going to executive session, gonna be second, all the favor say aye? Aye. Okay. I have a motion, anybody wants to make, executive session?
I'd like to make a motion that we terminate the employment of the Anticofer in the Lakeland Department.
Then I have a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All the favor say aye? Aye. Any motion, Gary? Uh, Larry lost it.
Have any opposed?
Have any opposed?
Larry's already gone, I bet.
No, Larry's sitting there.
When I say back here, you back.
Larry, you wanna speak to the count?
Yes, sir.
How y'all doing, Steve?
I would like to know.
Say what now?
I like to know, can I get my job, like?
Well, you have to make an application, and when the job comes up, you just don't have a job, right there.
All right.
If I do, if I do, we say you come back.
All right.
You're a good employee.
All right.
Would I just, councilman?
Yes.
My name's Don, Gary, I have a, some.
I have a son here, a son that was attacked by a pit bull, a little house threat. And I'd like to suggest that the city implement a new ordinance or whatever needs to happen in order to have a ordinance in place that if you have a dog that has been deemed a vicious dog, that there is more than two incidences where calls were made to that address, that that dog be hanging to put down. I know it's costing the city of Lakeland money to house a dog that inflicted serious injury to my son for more than, almost three weeks already. To house that dog, for us to go to court to get an order to have that dog put down. There needs to be some sort of ordinance put in place, an order, a law put in place on the city code that would allow the city to do their job later to contain these animals that are vicious in nature in order to prevent another child being injured, possibly a child being killed. But I need to address that too, the report the city need to go towards an act of ordinance that would govern that.
Chief, Larry's snake law, can you address that?
Well, I, I, I know the, the one that you're talking about. And I looked up how many calls we get since the beginning of the first of the year, all, all the way back to January. And for that residence, we have had no calls on the dog. It was her sister's residence. We had a bunch of dogs that were put down. But that residence, we didn't have any until we developed her son every year.
Can I answer that? I would have the impression that it was more instances.
It, it was, it was the same people. It was her sister that had the dogs that were vicious that we had put down. It wasn't her, or the people that lived in the house with that fourteen-hour resident.
Right.
It wasn't her, it was her sister that lives on Bank Street and I made that vicious dog.
Is, is there, is there a statute or that's, that's towards a law that if you have a dog or animal that's being vicious that you can, you can have that animal put down?
Yes.
Except out of town? Rather than it being a burden on the city to house these apples, or whatever, the time before we go.
Well, the only thing that we have to do is we have to get a, 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 I can't just, just call, I can't have somebody, I can't have it put down, you know? Completely without.
Right.
And only one bites a child, I bet it's not worth it.
Don, we're sorry to hear about your child, like, and my grandson, or, you know, that, that's terrible. That's bad. And, and I think they, what, rather than got the dog since it happened.
I mean, they, they stayed out there till eleven o'clock. They, they didn't, they didn't try to act and handle the dogs, and, and I appreciate that. But I, I just, I think there needs to be some ordinances where if you got a dog of a vicious nature, it needs to be in a, in a kennel. A two-hundred-dollar kennel could have saved my child from being, being attacked. That's right. And, and being a star of the lot. You know, next time, is that two-hundred-dollar, that same two-hundred-dollar kennel could have, could have very well prevented a child from being killed. Because it, 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 history repeats itself. And we don't do something, we don't address it now, then when it repeats itself, we can go back and say, well, we should have done something a little different. If it's a, if it's a vicious dog, a bloodline of vicious dog, I feel like there should be some way the city can install or instill an ordinance that says that you've got to go to yourself for it. Your dog's got to be in a six-foot-high kennel, and, and if, if all the dog of that nature, I want to protect my, I want to protect my dog, but I also protect individuals around about my dog. And I, I think that that's not, that's not a tremendous burden, if I'm all the dog of that nature, that's not a tremendous burden to have to, 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 to keep that dog safe, and, and, and keep, keep it out of harm's way for other people. I, I think that's something that could certainly be implemented as an ordinance. If we need to give a dog of a vicious nature, the city ordinance that says that we gotta keep her trash picked up in the yard, the city ordinance that says we gotta keep her dressed, well, also, the city ordinance could say, look, if you got a dog of a vicious nature, it's got to be in the kennel.
How do you, how would you classify a vicious dog?
Well, it has, a pit bull is a different breed. And it's, when he's talking about his pit bull, a pit bull, if it takes blood one night, it wants it again. It's not like a Labrador or something like that, you know? A pit bull, if he takes blood, he's gonna go after it again. You don't talk.
I think the state has got about six classifications of these dangerous dogs.
Yes.
The state statute.
And I, and I'm not up a hundred percent on the state statutes on them, but I mean, I agree with you. I mean, we could probably look up these laws that the state had on these dogs and, and probably do something and put something in ordinance, you know, look at it hard enough.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, again, I, I think that was just the state. I mean, it, it, something needs to be done with pit bulls, but ever since I've been here and BJ's started doing the animal control, BJ's stepped up his game with dogs. I mean, I, I'm obvious here earlier, BJ had forty-five calls on the city last month, and, and he's constantly calling, he always puts it in mind, what can I do with this, and what can I do with that? And I'm telling you.
Well, we're, we're doing, we're doing the excellent job of, of, of trying to govern our lease laws and, and taking care of them, and I appreciate that. But I just, very keen mind to do it all. If, if we know the state statutes, you gotta establish a guideline for what's a vicious dog, let's go a little further and implement an ordinance that says that if you have this, this breed of dog, as specified by Georgia state law, then it's got to be quarantined. That way we protect the citizens that, 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 that walk the street, that enjoy walking, looking at grills in our town, that, that enjoy coming through our town, even guests coming through, I don't see anybody's child get hurt.
I, I see what you're saying, man, but it's a fine line there because, I mean, you can have a kid sit here and play with a Labrador and grab his ears and pull on his ears, and that Labrador, like, that kid in reaction. That, that dog, to me, is still a vicious dog. That's all we can take himself. But if that happens with a pit bull, a pit bull takes that blood, he wants it again.
Yep.
You know, that's.
Jordan, you can say what? What are the laws? Do we need to step ours up? Can we step up?
Well, we might, I'm sure. I want to generally speak to, at least under the civil law, this kind of dog is a kind of one fact. It wants to laugh one time, then it's a vicious dog. But just a label setting on a vicious dog, you know?
Does these are sitting, no?
Yeah. It's, it's, get into a discriminatory.
You know, state, if you come up with a statute, they ain't named five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, that's a couple of years.
And the council might come up with something to restrict those kind of dogs. And I'm sure they're, they're on the leash.
Now, you also have a right against a dog, you know? A several, one, one, I don't know. I couldn't say you're right, but just do whatever you want. Thank you, Donnie. And like I said, we're sorry your child, it's been Indian.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we, you know, had to operate in the law, but we will check into that and see if we can strengthen our Indian. And we appreciate you coming in.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, anybody? Anybody else? This, I think you're in a worse session, but. And we will, we will look into that.
BJ.
We need to take the children in our community. My wife walked around Lake Hurman, called one after her one time, jumped at her. Anybody that's got anything? Appreciate everybody coming. I declare this, I have a motion. Jerk?
I don't think you said that.
Second? All the favors say aye? Stand the jerk.